Welcome everyone. Sorry, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Sorry, my computer's freezing. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The schedule of regular meetings of the Board of Education is posted on our website. And we're going to, oh, and advertise appropriately in the retrospect and career post. I'm going to go into roll call. Mrs. Ezekiel is on her way. Mrs. Fappel? Mrs. Butchko?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. There's no executive session at this time, so we're going to move right into the STEAM presentation. Ms. Visser, are you ready?
Do you need me to talk? I'm not very loud. Has everyone found out last week at the book fair? So, thank you, thank you for having us present. So, I have many friends over there who are very eager to share some of our fun STEAM activities. So, I am, I'm Kate Visser, and I work here, I work in Collingswood too, and I'm our media specialist. STEAM is a combination of different things. It is science, art, math, technology, engineering. So, it's a mixture of all these areas where we're trying to, you know, get everyone interested in different areas and see what they might like for the future, what they might like to explore now. How we do it here at the school is we've been doing it once a trimester for different grade levels. So, right now, we just finished with kindergarten and first grade. And it's once a week, and we've been doing stations. We started that last year when Ms. Salloway was doing it with me. And we found that to be a really successful way that students could do a variety of different activities. Right in that area where everyone's set up. Some of the activities that we have, and you'll get to see some demonstrations later. We build a lot with Legos. We've gotten a lot of interesting Lego kits this year. One we started getting were some for Lunar New Year that will get to do some cool, like, multicultural STEAM activities next year. We have a lot of connects kits. We have one out on the table tonight that you can make different creatures, and it guides you through them, or you could make your own. We do a lot of coding. We have several robots. You'll see a Botley and a BeBot robot demonstrated tonight. We do some offline coding activities too, just to get the principles of coding down. We have what we call a Makerspace slash Art Station with lots of different activities. Different things we put and see what the kids can create out of them, like styrofoam cups, paper plates, litter, I don't know why I pick litter, but it gets everywhere. Beads, pipe cleaners, anything, and just give them kind of freedom to create things. They make some really, really amazing things. Cool. We have the Buddha boards. Couple people have been diving right into them. That is painting with water, and it's cool because it disappears and dries, and then you can do something again. So, it's not permanent, but it's really fun. It's also a nice mindfulness tool, so we pull that out sometimes for relaxation. We have some virtual reality options that have been very fun. We have Merge Cubes, which are little cubes that have apps for the iPads, and you can see things in 3D, like they do like flowers and see all the parts of a flower. See a baby up close, see planets, and then you can make it, some of them project, like you can have a giant dinosaur walking through the library. That's really fun. And the Oculus, we have a lot of fun with those. We have a lot of friends who are really, really good at using them and have been helpful fifth graders in teaching others how to use them too. And so, that's been a lot of fun as well. Those are just some of the things we do a lot. Here's some pictures, some examples of some. We have someone using Merge Cube. That was a giant UFO, an alien, that some students created earlier in the school year with Makerspace. We have special tools that are used just for cardboard that are very safe so that we don't have to use anything we could get hurt with, that were created. So, we can cut and do all kinds of cool things with cardboard. That was a lot of fun. And duct tape, very, very popular. It makes a lot of fun things. Had some tutorials on the iPad that you could watch and then create something. And then we have magnet tiles and building that way too, in that picture. STEAM and story, so we try to combine literacy, because it is a library, with everything. And I do have, next to Alex and Maris back there, is a table with just a few selections of some of the STEAM books we have. We have a lot of biographies about famous people and their inventions, and books about how to do different things, how to build, how to think certain ways. And just like really great stories too. One in the picture is Someone Builds a Dream. That's a great story. It shows a lot of representation of different types of people in STEAM fields doing different things, and a whole like nice theme of goal setting. So, that's a great book. So, a lot of books. Next year, there's some things looking into getting for the library and for STEAM in the school. Wonder Books are really amazing books that come with headphones, so a student can come and grab one and listen to the story directly and read along with the book. So, I thought that would be a really nice tool for some of our littles, but also nice for some of our ELL students and some of our students who are maybe working hard on their reading skills to have better fluency with the technology element. So, those are really cool. Novel Effect is a neat app I've been looking at. One of the elementary schools in Collingswood uses that a lot. You can have a book, play the app, and it'll have special sound effects that go with the story as you read to kind of enhance your reading experience. There's other virtual reality options that we're looking at. We've been, I just got like the final materials. We would need to do pearler beads, which is very, very popular at our public library. They do a lot of pearler bead parties. So, hoping in the summer when we're here for STEAM, we can do some of those fun pearler bead activities too. Always looking at new things to enhance the program. Careers, we do talk about that a lot, you know, different options. I know we have a couple friends already who really want to be engineers back there, and are really interested in art. So, we, even though we're young, we're thinking about, you know, what we might want to do when we're older. And we'll try to break stereotypes of some of the careers too. Because a lot of times when we think of a certain career in the STEAM field, we might think of only one type of person. So, it's really cool to see the avenues are open for all our students. We do an activity a lot in the beginning of the year called What Does a Scientist Look Like? And it actually, I couldn't find the activity now. I don't know if it's not taken down. But it shows a lot of cool photographs of different people who are real scientists, and they are all different ages. They're from all around the world. There was a picture of one of the scientists, and she had her two kids in the picture with her. So, it was really cool to see all these different people that are doing all vastly different fields of science, and they come from all different backgrounds. So, that's really nice for, I think, our students to see too. Collaboration, that's really important. We have our students there collaborated on a project that was a huge task, but a lot of fun, on leper contracts. So, the second grade teachers asked, "Hey, Ms. H, can we do leper contracts this year for STEAM?" And I said yes, not knowing what that was or never doing it before, and not knowing it would take like three full periods to do and complete, and that it would have litter again everywhere. But it was a lot of fun, and we read, for that one, we read a story, How to Catch a Leprechaun. And we talked about it, and we also have a book with different ideas, and we looked at that, and we watched a video with a sample, and then we talked about the materials we would have, and then they went off and they built the traps, and that was a lot of fun. So, we collaborate, not just as students, but when we have the class, the teachers are in here with me too. So, we get to collaborate on things that they might like to do or that they think maybe there's a skill they would like to enhance in the class. So, it's all hands on deck when we have STEAM. All the ideas come from a lot of different areas. So, I mentioned the teachers. Sometimes students will say, "Can we do this?" or "Do you have this?" And we'll try to find that, find an activity for that. I'm a member of some different groups, Future Ready Librarians. They have like a million ideas. The AASL and ALSC are two library professional groups I'm in. And then I go to PD events and conferences and read books to give ideas too. So, there's always lots of really awesome ideas out there. Just wanted to share this too, because we do a lot of work with SCL in our school district, and it ties in so nicely with STEAM and STEM because we are working together a lot of the times, working on, you know, building relationships, doing projects together, teamwork, all these nice things. Trying to have patience has been a real important one, not just like grabbing things, different things. So, it's nice to see the link and the tie-in and how easily that works. There's STEAM in other areas. I have a photo here of one of our students at one of our, I also do the multicultural club. So, we had a family event for multicultural club where we repurposed, yeah, I'm right here too, I didn't realize you were going to see yourself. We repurposed all this broken jewelry that this shop owner, she owns a Fair Trade Store in Haddon Heights, and she's helped with a couple of our club activities. And she had all this broken jewelry and pottery and stuff, and we repurposed it into art. And families came, and we worked on it together, and it was really fun. And we all made the link, we're like, "Hey, that's kind of like a STEAM thing too, because we're taking these different materials and we're upcycling them and turning them into something else, and, you know, using our creativity and our brains and design thinking skills." So, that was really fun. And then we have a lot of people that will, a lot of teachers who will use our activities for indoor recess or other class activities. All the different books we have, there's so much that ties into STEAM. There is a lot of amazing public library programs that do similar things that we do. Everyone seems to love our Botley robot. And Caitlin, who's our public librarian at the Haddon Township branch, which is our branch that we would utilize, she has a Botley club. So, she came and talked to some of our classes one day and shared her program. So, they were able to say, "Oh, I could do this at school, and I can go to the public library in the summer on the weekends and do the same thing." And New Jersey Makers Day is an event that happens annually, and all the libraries do really cool events for that too. And at home, there's a lot of stuff that we talk about sometimes. You know, this might be, look like, you know, something fancy that we have at school, but you can do the same thing at home with some of these, you know, more simple activities. A lot of stuff that we do at the art station is all stuff that you could find around the house usually, like paper plates and popsicle sticks. So, it ties into a lot of areas. That's our STEAM area, and it's also a lending library. So, all items are available for teachers to borrow anytime, so STEAM can be infused or, you know, anytime they want to. And it's been popular a lot right now because we're lending down the end of the year, and we're looking for a lot of ways to keep everyone engaged still. They have a bunch of pictures, I think, to end, just showing different things that we've done throughout the year, different things we've made. I know there's Avery on the left. She made these really cool maracas one day with art by putting beads into two containers and like hooking them and putting a popsicle stick in. And she's like, "Well, I made a musical instrument." And these are activities too, when they make things. There's no like, you know, no grown-up or anyone saying, "This is what I want you to make." They just go and use their imaginations and create all things on their own, which is really, really cool. A picture of Summer on the right, she made some cool things. We had our Eagles pep rally. So, we had STEAM the week of the pep rally, and a lot of kids made some cool jewelry and signs, and we had like a very spirited STEAM time. Other activities, we had, we had those trays. We put our beads on it, got those because we all, I realized how much everyone loved beading. So, the trays helped us from getting beads everywhere and keeping everything in one place. We have a lot of design challenge kits, so that was one that I think it, that's, I'm sure, I can't tell from the picture, but we, there's different ones where you can, one, I know you can do a catapult. We have like build a skate park. We have little accessories for the Botley too, where you can make a little challenge for him. And then that space kit was really fun because that was space, but it was also like a Rube Goldberg type thing, so with a marble run. So, you had to make everything fit just so to make it work. And I think a couple of friends back there, like Nicholas and a couple, I think Mia, they were very successful in getting that to work a few times. So, that was really cool to see. I think I just have a few more pictures just so that we can see. Someone in a box. They just have a lot of fun building with cardboard. People brought in lots and lots of boxes in the beginning of the year. So, we had a plethora of boxes. Daisy made a really cool flower out of duct tape there. And then I think I just showed a picture, closed up, of some of the supplies we have that we use to make different things. And we also have students here, I don't know if they're ready, or the best way, do we want to have them one at a time or go over and like a group? One at a time, okay. So, they have like favorite activities, and a couple brought some different examples. So, does everybody feel ready to share something? I'll call your names. So, see, you're not ready, okay. Maris, do you want to go first? Our little scientist artist back there. Or Annabelle, do you want to go first? Okay. Annabelle, you want to do the BeBot? You want me to come over, right?
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. Thank you, Ms. Fissis and all the students. That was great. Yeah, it was wonderful. We're going to move into the curriculum presentation with Mrs. McPartland.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, this is going to be a very difficult act to follow tonight. I know I want a B-bot to come home with me. And Mrs. Fissis knows I'm a huge fan of books, so I have to borrow some of those to take home tonight and read. So my presentation is actually an overview of some of the curriculum development work we have done over the course of this entire school year. And so there were some particular areas of focus. Some of them are just based on new programs we've adopted, and some of them are based on curriculum initiatives that have been a result of the Department of Education. So I wanted to highlight mathematics tonight, social studies, health and PE, world language, as well as visual and performing arts. And Mrs. Fissis is going to be my slide presentation person. So the first thing I actually want to discuss very briefly is that a few years ago, we decided to change our curriculum development process to the CAR framework. And basically, the CAR framework stands for the Connected Action Roadmap. And it essentially allows us to focus on student learning at the heart of everything we do in collaboration with various aspects, including making sure we're looking at assessments, making sure we have teacher collaboration through PLCs, that we are using our data to effectively design our instruction, and put initiatives forward. So it all comes together as a result, basically, of a focus on student learning. So one area is world languages. And there's a lot on these slides. It's very hard to discuss curriculum development, especially from all the initiatives we have, without having as much information as we can. But I just put some highlights here on the slides for you, and we're going to put this on the district website, so anyone can directly access links and look at this more closely. But in particular, in Oakland, we did a revision of our Spanish curriculum in grades K to 2, under the lens of the goals of world language practices. And you can see that there are some major goals, including communicating, understanding culture, making connections with language and people, comparisons in terms of nature of language and culture in order to interact, and then also -- my glasses are not strong enough -- communities. So, you know, learning to use the language both within and beyond the classroom in order to interact and collaborate with your community. So Intu Math, what I want to highlight here is that this was a curriculum development that took place not because of a standards update, but because of program. We had taken time last year to have a committee, and I did speak in the very beginning of the school year about Intu Math and using our new program. It has been received extremely well this year. Part of the reason for that is because we are able to really streamline the process of our instruction, the standards, with a program that meets them, as well as making sure that the assessments we are giving are ongoing throughout the course of the year, and they actually can drive our instruction throughout everything we do. So there are some components, including a growth measure. Families have received growth measure reports this year to understand progress. We also can conduct a beginning, middle, and end of year assessment that happens in grades 1 through 5, and that allows us to really understand standards. We offer summative assessments that occur at the end of a chapter or a unit. And then we have an online practice, which is called WAGL. And this actually allows us to be more responsive to instruction based on skills that students need in terms of building. So Year 1 was really successful, but you can see there are a lot of components in Intu Math. So as a result of ongoing training and coaching that occurred this year, we feel very strong about the implementation that will occur in Year 2. And as a result of our PLCs that are occurring very regularly here in Oakland, we're able to really understand the new program, its effectiveness, and also how we can improve in the future. Health and physical education. This is an area that was a DOE initiative in terms of curriculum development. The revision for health and PE is banded. So there are goals and expectations by each of the grade level spans that you see there. So for example, by the end of grade 2, there are specific goals that students need to have. And there were particular areas of focus that range everywhere from kindergarten through grade 12. So the one thing I want to mention is that everything that we will be using in terms of our program, any materials, will be developmentally appropriate based on the grade level and span. And our health curriculum in particular is not going to be banded. Our health curriculum is actually going to be specific to each grade level, because we wanted to have a clear focus and understanding of what's being offered at each area and grade level expectation. And on the right, you're going to see the comprehensive health and physical education practices. These are the things that we hope all students are going to be able to set for themselves, work alongside their teachers to accomplish. And so, you know, everything is about a healthy lifestyle, and that's comprehensive, from movement and all the way down to just general healthy practices. Part of the health and PE standard initiative was to have an understanding of health comprehensively and also an acknowledgement that there may be families who have concerns about some areas of health that they would prefer to be talking about and discussing and working with their students or children with at home. So just as a note for you, there was a broadcast from the DOE last April about the health standards and how a district and family could address if they felt that they would rather address these standards at home. And we will have the formalized opt-out process on our district website in August, which will include an outline of the health and PE by grade level. It will also include a form that will be available to you, so you understand the opt-out process, and the opt-out process will be defined for you. And those will go directly with the building principals and the health and PE teachers to address any concerns that there may be. So social studies was another initiative. Again, social studies is banded. It has specific goals by the end of grades K -- sorry, ends of grade 2 and so on and so forth. Areas of focus included civics, government, and human rights, geography, people and the environment, economics, innovation, technology, history, culture, and perspectives. And there are specific goals, again, social studies practices that are listed here. And the one other thing of note is that the Department of Education has most recently started infusing climate change goals and objectives throughout every content area. So social studies embedded in our curriculum is an understanding of climate change and ways that we can make sure that our students and families are aware of what we can do to make sure that we are protecting our earth and protecting our world for a better place in the future. All new standards initiatives from the Department of Education will include climate change. So moving forward, that's something that we're going to see pretty regularly infused, along with some other things, like we do technology, career readiness skills. Those are always embedded into standards as well. So this is a newer initiative. And then finally, I kind of wanted to come full circle at the end. So part of CAR, as I mentioned in the beginning, is really focusing on student learning. And one of the ways that we did this this year is by establishing data team meetings with our supervisors, principals, vice principals across our entire district in Oakland and also in Collingswood. And one of the things that we have highlighted here is that data can be really scary for teachers, because it can also be very overwhelming. And as a teacher myself, in the past, data was one of those things that I really grappled with. I didn't know what to do with all of this information, the numbers. It kind of was a little scary. And it can be overwhelming. But what we have done is made sure that we understand that data is a tool, that we can make sure that it's easy to understand and digestible, and that it provides opportunities for our instructional decisions. Through the meetings that we took place over the course of this year, we were able to connect to the Connected Action Roadmap, underlying those questions that are listed here. And then we were able to set SMART goals. So every school worked to understand where their students were in particular content areas, drilling down by student level, and really understanding what we could do to grow, essentially, whether it was an overall skill gap by grade level, or whether it was a select group of students who might have been struggling, or also for students who needed to be accelerated in areas. So all of those were part of our discussions. And we particularly focused on literacy and math this year, and I do see in the future being included other areas that will focus on goal setting and data, specific to science, world languages, and the other areas. But we really felt comfortable with our data sources for literacy and mathematics to get started this year. And one of the things that our team really wanted was to establish these meetings and make sure they were effective. And one of the ways that we did that was by making sure we asked for feedback. So we did send out a survey to our principals and teachers, who were also involved, by the way, in these data team meetings, just to ask their feedback and what they gleaned from the opportunity. So some of the comments were there. A lot of it was based on the idea that data can be scary, and it really is sometimes inaccessible. So our opportunity to have discussions really made it accessible for people, and the principals were able to go back to their teams and really discuss the data and decide how they could use it effectively. We also looked at some state reports that come from our state assessments and really found some tools that were helpful, principals, and really commented on how that information can also be very overwhelming, but they were able to get some practical and useful information that hopefully will prepare the students even more for NJSLA when this time came around this year. And everyone also just commented on the time, because we had the meetings and because we scheduled them, people were actually spending the time where it seems to be the thing that is very hard throughout the course of the day to sit down with a team and just discuss data, right? There's so much going on through the course of the day. So this kind of forced the hand a little bit to make that time for us to meet pretty frequently, just to kind of go through all of the accomplishments that were happening in the school, and really deciding what we could do to move further. So those are some of the comments that we had, and I have to say that this was probably one of the most meaningful things that we took on, I think, this year. And that is all I have. Thank you. I know, I wasn't using a B-bot.
Does anyone have any question on the board, I'm sorry, for Mrs. McPartland? That was great. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll go into committee of the whole. Is there a motion going to committee of the whole?
So moved.
Seconded.
You've been seconded? All right. Well, now go on to committee of the whole. Does anyone have anything that they want to bring forward for discussion?
I have the snack stand documentation from council. I don't know if anybody else got to take a look at it, but this came from Vince on town council from when I went back about the soccer grounds, soccer fields not being able to -- well, they're in rough condition, and then there's complaints about us not being able to use a snack stand at all. So we went to council, asked them about that, and there's a key that was, I guess, unavailable to us, but now we can gain access to it, but they --
Can I -- I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? Can you clarify when you say "us"? You're not speaking about the board. You're speaking about soccer.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. For soccer-related families and people in the soccer club and whatnot. So the agreement was basically that they will -- I mean, from the way it looks, it's that everyone in soccer, any of the sports, they have to do pretty much everything for the snack stand. They have to clean it daily, as you would expect, but also at the very end of the year, they have to take the fryer grease out, they have to clean the sinks, they have to do everything. And then I think township will just lock the doors and put the lock on it for offseason. So we're -- there are councils wanting to meet with, I guess, the Board of Education to kind of just go over and clarify these items on this list. And I would like to say what's expected of council on this, because it looks like it's strictly -- yep.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm reading this, and is it the expectation that the school district is going to do all these things?
No.
Or each individual sport.
So that's blank, right? It's not filled out.
It's not filled out.
Right.
So like, I guess it would be each individual sport's responsibility.
So this is my question also. So the snack stand does not belong to the board.
Correct.
The snack stand belongs to the borough. So the agreement is between the borough and the organization that would be using the snack stand, not the Board of Education. snack stand, not the Board of Education.
That's my understanding, yes.
Correct.
But it was brought to the board by community, so I'm just answering that aspect.
It was brought to the board because they couldn't use, utilize the restroom, but they couldn't utilize the restroom because the borough has a key.
Correct, right.
Not the board. I just, I just want to make it clear that it's, we're not the ones withholding restroom uses.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry, I'm being vague. But I mean, that's, that's, that's basically, it's, they, council, town council still wants to meet with the Board of Education to nail down some of these ideas and how communication can go out to the community a little bit better on how to gain access to the snack stand and the bathrooms and whatnot.
Jimmy, do you mind, during softball and baseball, the snack stands open. So why is this, I guess, a seasonal issue? Is it related to the way the leagues are operating it?
I think it's a commu, I mean, I, from my understanding, I think it's a communication barrier. Like, I think the, yeah, yeah, sure.
Sorry, chiming in just for a second. So for Little League, Adam Scherr manages the snack stand. Actually, I wish Lila was here because I know she helps a lot with it too. I think the challenge for soccer was that there was a change in leadership, and maybe there was some uncertainty onto whether the snack stand could be utilized for snack stands slash restrooms, could be utilized during soccer games. So I think that was a communication issue. But again, it's a communication issue probably between the borough and the organization that would want to use those, and maybe we can just act as a liaison between those.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, exactly. We, yeah, we stand as the liaison. I was just trying to help out the community, communicate with them on school grounds, so.
If I can make a suggestion. So I, I work at a museum that rents its spaces out for private events or any kind of event, basically. And then when somebody, when we sit down and come up with an agreement, like we do with our facilities agreements with the individual entity, we say, if you want use of catering, anything like that, I mean, restrooms is different, but you could look at it that way, then you have to enter into a contract with another entity. So you could do something similar. I just think it needs to be spelled out on the form. I think our, the Board of Education's form needs revision. I know there's been some questions about the states of the fields and things like that, but I think at the very least, restrooms need to be addressed on that.
Our, just to make sure, our forms are just for facility, just for the fields and stuff. We have nothing to do with that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. But I'm just suggesting that by assuming that a group wouldn't need facilities like restrooms, we may be doing disservice of communication.
I just think we've got to be careful not to get involved with something that's the town's and not ours.
Right. And I kind of agree with Therese, it's kind of saying, I think it's important that children be able to have access to restrooms. And so it, it would be helpful if. Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I see in, in the form and the footnote saying, if you need access to snack stand and/or restrooms, contact. Yep. And then, right, and then also there would have to be these responsibilities, which would probably come from borough. And I don't know if it's possible maybe to have something like that, again, this is probably with the borough, but have something like that on the snack stand, maybe a little, like a little plaque that just addresses, you know, that way community members don't think it's our problem, you know, they don't think it's, they don't blame the Board of Education. It says clearly on a plaque on the building over there, this is property of Oakland Town. You know, if you need access, call this number or email, you know, so something like that.
It says that, it says it on the tennis courts, so.
That's not our stand, as has been pointed out. We have nothing to do with it. I don't think the ground it's sitting on is even ours. I think it's under a 99-year lease to the borough. I think the less activity we have with that, the better off we are. Now, putting the little verbiage on their, on the form when they sign it that says, if you need restrooms, call the borough, I, I think is fine. But beyond that, I don't think we should have any involvement at all with that. The borough has to kind of step up. I believe, I agree that kids need bathrooms, that's for sure, but the borough also needs to step up and do a little something too. I, I don't think we should be involved with that snack stand in any way, shape, or form.
I'm not proposing that we be involved with snack stand. I'm just proposing that, that the groups that go through facilities forms to get field usage from us know who to contact for, for restrooms. That's it.
Who to contact at the borough, that's fine, yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm not even talking about the snack stand, really. I'm just talking about the best, restrooms, period, right? They need to be cleaned, so that's the whole thing, but that's between the borough and the, and the groups. But I do think that if we're, if groups are paying to use our fields, that we provide them with some information about where the groups that are using those fields can use restroom, you know, because we don't have them here. Like, groups that use our gym, they have access to our restrooms. Groups that use our fields do not have access to our restroom. So that's it, yeah.
Some, some of these groups need to take a certain initiative and find out what these, these rules are on their own.
Also true, yeah.
As Jimmy has done, he's, he's done a lot of research on it, and that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But some of these groups, they, they've been in town for 50 years, so they should now know who does what.
Yeah, I think documentation just needs to be cleared up. And I apologize for my vagueness on the "we," but yeah, Board of Education acting as a liaison for community to council for a property that is near school grounds.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, and not to, like, just keep going on the point, but there, ours, the Oakland Soccer Club will be merging, or has merged or is merging with Collingswood, and so there will probably be different people in charge, different coaches that don't know. And so just making sure that if there is a facilities request, I haven't seen one, but if there is, letting them know that you have to contact this person for this, right? That make sense? Yeah.
I just wanted to circle back regarding the DEI bylaws that we've been talking about over the course of the winter. Was able to share out the most current draft of our bullets. It's been a while since we talked about it, though. We've been busy with budget and negotiations and everything else, so I just wanted to circle back to everyone as we roll into summer. Based on our last conversation that we had, two, two of the main points that the board had made was, there was a, that third statement in there, you know, with student voice, felt it was more appropriate for middle school or high school to change that. So I did add some additional wording to change that and focus more on the learning opportunities that are provided for the students. The other piece that we kind of talked about was the language that's used within the different areas and how specific it should be. Should it be more general? That came up during committee as well. When we talked about it in the winter, I think most, mostly everyone agreed to keep it as aligned as possible to the language in the statutes, the language in the current board policies. And the one recommendation that came from committee as well was to actually include the, the policy numbers in this document as well. So that's something I'll, I'll work on updating, but just wanted to share those updates to the wording with everyone and see if anybody had any thoughts or feedback to the new, that third sentence there.
So that was my only feedback, was to connect to the policies, and then I would love to see this brought to a vote.
So my question, like, so what, what are we doing with this? Are we adopting it as a core value statement? Are we making it an addendum to a, an existing policy? Like, what's, what's the hope here with, with this?
I think the, the plan was to add it as a set of bylaws to the policy that we would be able to reference as these topics come up during meetings.
I'm sorry, I can look to see how the, can everybody hear me? The bylaws are numbered. There's a lot of open numbers between like zero to like 156. There's a lot of empty space, but I'm thinking this is going to be one of your first, because I think the first few bylaws are like how you're incorporated, what, you know, blah, blah, blah. I'm guessing it would be one of the first few bylaws you might want to stick in.
What, what exactly, I guess, brought this on? I'm just trying to understand, like, was this something that's required, or like, what, what exactly is the?
So, well, so there's, over the last year, been quite a bit of back and forth in regards to the health and physical education standards that were covered a little bit, and some of the pieces that have been added to the statutes that we follow as well that actually are outside of the health and physical ed standards, that, that include regulations on, for elementary in particular, the diversity and inclusion statute, which talks about how districts are now required to include learning on all the protected classes that are outlined. So race, ethnicity, religion, differing abilities, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, family configuration, socioeconomic status, and immigration status. So there's a lot of back and forth between, it's a political hot topic, and so there's a lot of misconceptions out there about what the statutes say, what's included. So as folks come, come and speak with us, you know, my thought was that to have a set of bylaws that we can refer to as a board, assuming that we are all in agreement, or as Therese said, to vote, so that we do have something to refer to when folks do come out. You know, when, when folks come out to speak at the open portions of the meeting, it's not really designed to be dialogue, so, you know, chances are it goes one of two ways. One way, folks may get incredibly frustrated because we just sit there and, like, not engage, which, you know, we're, we're not supposed to. Or, you know, where divisive opinions that may be shared could be construed as, you know, whether we agree, whether we disagree, you know, based on who's, who's speaking. So this would give us the opportunity to, as a board, refer them to, sorry, that's my fifth grader. Yeah, 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 that's, that's the R2 bot. So this would give us something official to refer to without getting into any kind of back and forth or anything like that. So that was the thought there.
I think on November 2nd of last year, 2022, he sent out an email from when Rich was at the NJSPA workshop that addressed basically the reasoning behind all of it. And it was sent to everyone on the board.
Yeah, it's going back. I was just trying to understand, it's like, this is something that's mandated or required, or it's something that you just felt, I think we're trying to get ahead of the game.
The inclusion of the topics are required at this point as part of the statutes, K to 12, or K to 5 in our case. You know, as Jimmy mentioned, there, there was, it was a big topic at school boards. There were four or five different sessions on that, and a lot of it deals with transparency, communication, that kind of thing. So I guess the thought was, you know, for us as a board, to have something referred to when folks come out and have questions without necessarily getting into a back and forth. We can refer them to the bylaws and have something official.
I think also, in addition, it's a proactivity like Colleen was talking about. If this is something that you can find on our website, then you know exactly how our board conducts itself and the core values of our school community. So as the chair of the school community and policy committee, I very much think that this could be a positive step in a positive direction for how we communicate with all of our families, parents, students, and educators, everybody in our community.
I, I guess I'm just, I was already under the assumption that everyone was treated equally. So I'm just kind of confused as why specific things have to be labeled out. I know you're saying that, you know, the new standards and the wording and stuff like that, but it just seems like, I would hate to think that anyone's coming here and thinking that we're not educating everyone the same.
So would I, that's why I didn't like to communicate it.
So, but I don't, why have to, I don't understand having to list specific things. To me, it's everyone here is accepted, end of story, all. Everyone's treated equally. You know, I feel like, I don't know, I just feel like some of the language starts to get, like, it looks more of a, to me, it feels more of a political statement than it does, like, we accept everybody, because we do accept everybody. Like, that's, that's why I don't understand, like, as a parent, I would assume that there's not one student in this building who's not treated the same as every other student, especially at this age. I mean, you're starting against the sexual orientation, all that other stuff. I mean, we go up to fifth grade, you know, so I guess I'm just.
It's, that's been the ongoing, I think, dialogue across the board, and I'm open to whatever the board decides as a, as a group. The language there, the, the language is taken directly from the statutes and from the board policy.
Right, so if we already have statute.
When you reference statutes, are you talking curriculum-based statutes or statutes mandating that language be included in admissions statements?
From the curriculum statutes.
So from the curriculum statutes. So, but I think when you said, like, when you were explaining to Amy the justification or the genesis of really where this came from, political hot topics, literally what this is, and I feel like it stands to become divisive because there are a number of things here listed. What about those that we didn't list? I mean, you can literally just put a period at the end of all people, and I think it achieves the same thing. I don't think that we have to list this out. It, it kind of minimizes what we do as a Board of Education by muddying this and becoming political instead of focusing, I'm not saying that instead of focusing, I know that we focused on what's best for the kids, but I don't want this to take away from that because I, I think it stands to be divisive.
I think the part, this came up before, which you would not have been here for, but I think the reasoning for listing it out was because it matched the statutes versus just putting a period afterwards, because that did come up before, that, you know, everybody agrees that everybody's equal. It's not about taking it out, but in order to stay uniform with other documentation that is required and or already in play, it would just align with it. That's what I understood it to be.
So, but if, if we already have bylaws and statutes where this is said, there, there's kind of no need then to reinforce it. It, it is a very politically charged statement, whether some, it is. And then there, there's a lot of gray in this area too, when, you know, there's lines about supporting practices. Well, what does that look like? You know, if we're going to make a statement that says we support practices that, you know, promote dignity, respect for, yada, yada, like, well, what is that? What is a supportive practice? That, that's going to get us into some weeds there. And I, I just think if, if this is already basically laid out in bylaws and statutes, there's no reason to adopt a very politically charged statement.
So if I may, one reason to consider is that the, the political groups that are being described here are also communities. They're communities within our community. So I think that by naming them, we are giving them acknowledgement, and I think that the point of a statement is, is acknowledging communities. It is also acknowledging that not all communities are currently being treated equally. So as I said a couple of months ago, if we're going to squabble over, we just want all people because all are equal and everything's equal and everything's perfect, then we don't need a statement. That's not a statement. That's, so, and then, and that, and that, that's why we vote on things as a board. So I think we may have brought it to the point that we've discussed, like I said, I would love to see the policy, and then we can vote on it, and that's my two cents.
And I even think that when we say when people come up and it's unfortunate, like, we eat our hearts out because they're really telling us their troubles and we want, we just look at them blankly because we can't engage. I know we all feel bad about that, but I don't know how they feel any better because we listed these groups. I don't know that that's a consolation. They still feel like you can't answer me. And I, and Therese, to your point, there are communities that would, would be excluded from this list. I, but you're right, there's votes.
If, if I could just request guidance from Dr. McDowell, maybe a little input on what you think about this scenario.
When we think about these discussions, the natural tendency is for us to mimic the polarization that exists outside of the school district. By not acknowledging what we stand for, it leaves it up to interpretation. And so I think that consistent with other language that has been pervasive across the board policies, if we are making a statement, that statement clears up all of those potential discrepancies or those shades of gray. discrepancies or those shades of gray. And so dependent on where individuals fall within the continuum, they're perfectly within their right. I would encourage, because we have discussed this, take it to a vote and see where the chips fall. I think that the board is an apolitical group, and so we have to start looking at it as it's not always about who's in the room. It's sometimes about who's not in the room and who's not being represented in conversations. And so if we make, if we make a declarative statement, it says without a shadow of a doubt that we want to be more inclusive. And so that's, that's just my, my personal opinion.
Just, just a point, I talked about this at committee meeting last night, but I, I don't like the idea of listing who we're taking care of because that list can change. We might leave somebody out. I think it's more of a problem than a blanket statement. So from, from that side, I think that's, would be my position, that I, I don't want to list. Maybe we say something about we follow statute number so-and-so from the state of New Jersey. That way, anytime it changes, it, our policy is automatically changed. It doesn't have to be, have to be redone, just as a thought. And also, I'm hearing that we can't engage the public when they come up to speak, and I'm not sure why we think that. That's not true. The public comes up, has a statement, they ask a question, we can answer that question right then and there. Collingswood chooses not to. That's, that's their position. I always felt that if you can answer a question right away, you would do so. You'd avoid a lot of, a lot of drawn-out problems and people saying, well, you know, you're not, yeah, listen to me, yeah, but I never hear anything back. That doesn't have to be the case. You can't let the board get, get out of control because of all the conversation. But the simple questions that come up, and we don't have that many of them, they can be answered right away. There's no reason to put those people off.
But Mr. Stotts, we, just to your point, we've had comments that have been very politically charged brought to the board. So I think that that is part of it. I can't see how any of us could respond to those in the moment. So that's kind of the point of this.
Well, you don't have to respond. I mean, it's not mandatory that you respond, but you have the ability to do so. And I'm not sure what politically charged comments they're referring to, but I, I still think that if you can answer a question immediately, you should do so because it avoids hard feelings on the part of the people asking the questions. But again, I, I don't think we should be involved in politics. There may be a lot of occasions where you just say, well, thank you very much, have a good day.
I think generally speaking, it's public comment for a reason. But like your point, if it's a quick, you know the answer, there's no reason, and we have done that, when there's something that's quickly and you know the answer, or we've said so-and-so will get back to you, which they have and they followed up. I think that's difference, but it's not public discussion, and that's the difference.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm just, I'm sorry. And just to piggyback on both of your comments, and this does get kind, because we do follow the Open Public Meeting Act, we do have to have two public comment sections. That is the law. But it's our board meeting that the public is in, like, we're conducting our business in public, it's not a public forum. That's kind of the, like, we allow the public to speak, but that's kind of the difference. You know, this is our business meeting to conduct our business.
But there's also nothing that prohibits our responding.
Okay, so we're going to add that to the agenda for August first read? Or would this be considered? Yeah.
All right, Rich, can you edit that with the policy numbers and we'll put it on August as a first read? Fair?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just do hyperlinks to the actual board on...
Yep, and then send it to me and I'll get it on for August?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, moving on, oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have anything else for committee of the whole? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
Moved.
Second.
All right, we're done with committee of the whole. Moving on to future dates and miscellaneous information. So we have some important dates coming up. We have early dismissals for all students now through the end of the year. Tomorrow is the fifth grade promotion ceremony at 10:30, which will mark the end of my children here at the public school. So I will try not to crack, but no promises. We are closed June 19th or Juneteenth. Our last day of school is June 20th. And then there's some dates in July for our summer STEAM program. All right, moving on to routine board minutes. Do we have approval to approve the minutes for April 25th, 2023, and May 16th, 2023? So there's two minutes that we need to approve.
Some of...
Moved and seconded. Do we do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Okay, so now we move to our first public comment step, section. So this is for agenda items only, so please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Do we have anyone? Hearing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
Hey. So just a quick announcement. And so this week and last week, middle and high school students have been engaged in activities leading up to the Juneteenth Unity Day in Collingswood, which will be Saturday, June 17th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. And so there will be student work that is displayed. There will be middle, elementary, middle and high school students participating in the event, and all are welcome to attend. In terms of the enrollment report, 8.01, enrollment for May of 2022 was 267. Enrollment as of May 2023 is 276, with the principal's report attached. 8.02, 0.03, 0.04, and 0.05 are the school safety drill reports, the suspension report, and the child study team report, with there being no anti-bullying report for this month.
Thanks. Moving on to the board's administrative report.
In 9.01, I have a listing of your monthly transfers for the month of May. In 9.02 are your financial statements, and I certify no line accounts been over expended. And you're in a good cash position for the end of the school year. 9.03 is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued for the month of June. And 9.04 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning upon your approval tonight.
Great, so for our finance committee, turn it back to Rich.
All right. Tonight, we're looking for approval for items 10.01 through 10.21. So get comfortable, it's a long one. 10.01 is approval of budget transfers. 10.02 and 10.03 is approval of certifications of no over expenditures. 10.04 is approval of the secretary of treasury reports. And 10.05, 10.06 are approval of the purchase orders and warrants. Under new business, we have 10.07, which is approval of the contracted services for the 2023-24 school year as outlined in the attached document. 10.8 is approval of out-of-district special education placements for the 2023-24 school year at the attached rates. 10.09 is approval of real-time as our special education management module at the rate of $8,450.50 for the 2023-24 school year. 10.10 is approval of an agreement with the Camden County Educational Services Commission to adjoin the Schools Wellness Initiative. And this is of no cost to the district as it's grant-funded through 2024. 10.11 is approval of the Oakland Borough to maintain the OPS grounds for the 2023-24 school year in the amount of $13,000. 10.12 is the approval of shared nursing services between Oakland and Collingswood to support pre-K programming. 10.13 is approval of an addendum to the ESS Support Services Contract, and they provide substitutes and aides in various roles. 10.14 is the approval to distribute surplus funds held in the trust by Burlington County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund in the amount of $2,263. 10.15 is approval of the ESEA funding for the 2023-24 school year in the amount of 10.16 is approval to reimburse Gloucester Township Board of Education for providing transportation services in accordance with DCP's determination. 10.17 is approval to enter 60-month leads on, with fitney bowels for postage meters. 10.18 is approval for a five-year contract with Xerox Corporation to replace and upgrade our fleet of copiers. 10.19 is the approval of transfers to capital maintenance and tuition reserve counts as permitted by applicable laws and regulations. 10.20 is approval of the use of facilities forum for the OC Panthers basketball to utilize the gym. 10.21 is a use of facilities forum for the Oakland PTA to utilize the gym. And this is the best one of all. 10.22 and 10.23 is approval to accept donations of $300 from the Vicky and Company and 500 from EMB Coins for the purchase of those fantastic field day shirts.
Thanks, Rich. All right. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Are there any, I'm sorry, are there any questions on those items? I have one, well, maybe two comments. So I just wanted to point out, because we spoke about it earlier, so up for approval this month is the maintenance contract with Oakland Borough. So it does state in this contract, because I know this question has come up, this agreement shall not include the maintenance of any sports field for any other organization utilizing said facilities. We did talk about it in committee last night, so it is something that will continue the discussion. I think the gray area is particularly for the soccer field, is that the school also uses that field for recess. And so Keith had a suggestion about maybe overseeding it. It's hard because there's no irrigation, but it is something that is being looked at to be continued. But I just wanted to point that out, because there were some questions about that. And then the other one, I just want to clarify that the basketball is moved to 6 o'clock. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Perfect, okay. So that is it. So unless anyone has any other questions, we'll move to a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Vopel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right, so moved. So now we'll move on to a curriculum.
All right, so item 11.01, we're seeking approval for the 23-24 Comprehensive Equity Plan Statement of Assurance. We haven't made the plan yet, but it's our assurance that we will and submit it. Item 11.02, we're seeking approval for the following student to be placed on home instruction due to medical reason. Item 11.03, we're seeking approval for a paid medical and maternity leave of absence for the employee there from September 25th through November 8th, followed by an unpaid leave from November 10th through February 9th, anticipated return date February 12th. Similarly, item 11.04, we're seeking a medical maternity leave of absence for the employee from October 8th through November 17th, followed by an unpaid leave from November 20th through February 16th, with an anticipated return date of February 20th. Item 11.05, we're seeking approval for the 2022 elementary development, elementary curriculum development, so they can be compensated for the work they did. Item 11.06 is seeking approval to approve the following end-of-school-year summer program. You can see the programs and teachers listed, their hours and rates are there for you. Item 11.07, seeking approval for the 2023 summer child study team and related services staff as needed for IEP meetings, assessments, case management, things that happen in the summer there. 11.08, we're seeking approval for special education and gen ed teachers for the 2023 summer IEP meetings at the rate of 3970. Item 11.09, seeking approval for the following extracurricular stipends that are listed there for you. Item 11.10, seeking approval for the following substitutes and tutors. And if I can just give a special shout out to Mrs. Kay Shannon, still offering her services. I had her when I was a child, a student here. So awesome that Mrs. Shannon is still dedicated to, to the district and the students here. And that is it. So we are seeking approval of items 11.01 through 11.10.
Great, and is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we've been seconded. Are there any questions on any of those items? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Vopel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right, perfect. We'll move on to the School Community Relations and Policy Committee.
Item 12.01 is the PTA Liaison Report, which I'm happy to provide. The PTA met its last meeting of the academic year on June 6th. There was, it started with a special presentation of the first family who had raised a little over $100 for the PTA through a lemonade stand, which was absolutely adorable. So hats off to them once again. The big order of business was the election of new board members. So after successful elections, the new PTA president is Lila Anduhar. The vice president of governance is Donna Gribbick. The membership and corresponding secretary is Michelle Loughlin. And the treasurer is Cindy Cupid. So there was a lot of thanking the new volunteers and thanking our outgoing board members who did such an amazing job, especially during a very strange couple of years. In addition, they went over some, the vast amount of past PTA events that had happened in the last six weeks or so, including Spring Fling, Teacher Appreciation Week, Muffins with Mom, Donuts with Dad was coming up, the Townwide Yard Sale, which was a great success. A lot of excitement around the fifth grade, including the Blue and Gold Night on June 2nd, I believe. And we were talking about the book fair, the Visual and Performing Arts Evening Program, which I think was just amazing. So hats off to the school for that as well. The Field Day, which was yesterday, and then the upcoming fifth grade promotion activities and ceremony. There were announcements of scholarships and awards that were given out as we're getting towards that time of the year for graduations. We did talk about possible committee interests and volunteers for 22, 23, 2023, 2024 school year. Then everyone was sworn in, and that is about it. So I think the next meeting is not going to be until September. So that's the PTA report. Item 12.02 is OMASAC, and they did not meet since our last meeting, so I don't have an update. Item 12.03 is the Collingswood Board Report. Mr. Stotts?
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Collingswood's meeting was May 22nd. Teachers and support staff of the year were honored. The middle school was Elaine Gizzo. The high school was Erin Waller. They're the ones that I guess you guys will be interested in. The committee of the whole was discussed, the committee of the whole discussed the policy on admission with the age. Collingswood was restricting the age of the, you had to go by your birthday. You couldn't, you couldn't hold your kids back. And the SRO was also a point of discussion. Collingswood is now working on the job description for that position. Important dates, closing ceremonies. I have Friday 6/16. That's changed since then. Or it's graduation, I guess, is what I worry about. Now, yeah, closing ceremony, closing ceremony is Friday 6/16. And the gym, the high school graduation is Tuesday, 6/20, 6/30 on the football field, hopefully. Hopefully there's no rain, and that happens on the football field. That first date, 6/16, is the middle school, incidentally. I neglected to mention that. And the next Board of Education meeting for Collingswood is June 20th. Uh, and the next Board of Education meeting for Collingswood is June 26th, Monday at, uh, 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. Is that right, in the high school cafeteria? Okay. They approved, uh, all of the appointments for 23-24. They approved the current curriculum and special ed programs and policies. Uh, they approved, uh, some new substitute rates. The, the teachers are, are getting, uh, or substitutes for teachers are getting grand total of an extra $5. Maybe that's enough to attract some people, I don't know, hope so. The public comment, uh, was the same as it's been for the past few months. They, they talked about the school liaison officer, they talked about the policy on the age six. Uh, and there was one person talked about the, uh, Hibb report. Uh, they approved the lunch prices in middle school and high school next year will be $4. They approved the supporting resolution on bus drivers, uh, and CDL. The idea was to have, um, drivers of the small vehicles that serve as school buses not have to have a CDL due to the, uh, difficulty in finding drivers with CDLs to drive, what basically is a station wagon. So they're, uh, they're supporting that, uh, that change if it can happen. Uh, they approved a shared nursing service with Oakland, uh, where our nurse will provide the, uh, service to the Collingswood preschool classrooms that are in Oakland, which are three at this point in time. They, uh, approved allowing the Borough to use the, the athletic fields for the 4th of July ceremony. They approved various field trips, including, uh, summer camp for cheer, and I don't have a date on that, I'm sorry. They approved, uh, several retirements, resignations, and transfers, and some hires. They approved six policies, including the, uh, uh, one on, uh, the entrance age. The second public comment section, they had only one comment on, and it was on curriculum. And the meeting adjourned at 9:15. That's it. Questions? Tell you anything else about? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stotts. Um, item 12.04 is the report from the Oakland Education Federation. Mr. McMillan.
Um, OEF has not met since, um, I guess, maybe March of, or April, so, um, I, I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Um, item 12.05 is the HIB report from May 2023, which is attached. Um, and then item 12.06 are, um, nine, I believe, regulations requiring a first reading, or one reading. Is that correct? Not first, one reading, so approving them. So we are seeking approval for items 12.01 through 12.06.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, and on to a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Vopel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right, section 13, miscellaneous. 13.01 is the 2023-2026 Collective Bargaining Agreement uh, between the Oakland Board of Education and the Oakland Education Association. Um, and that is it, so we are seeking approval on this item, uh, three-year contract. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, are there any questions about it? All right, on to a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Vopel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Abstained.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right, uh, now section 14, this is our second public content, uh, area. So this is for any items you wish to bring to the board, so please stand, state your name, um, and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Any comments at this time? All right, hearing none, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A gambling girl, in the theater. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good summer. Happy summer.